Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate it on behalf of the board. I appreciate your attendance this evening. I hope that we can answer some of your questions and give you what I think is a lot of great information about what the board is proposing in terms of their referendum, which as you see before you is on December 12th, 2023. My name is James Albro. I'm the superintendent of schools here. I've met a number of you, thankfully, already, and through the different events in the school hallways as well, back-to-school nights and some of the other events that I've been attending. So it's good to see you again, and there's also some faces that I don't know, and I hope to meet you before this evening is concluded as well. So I'm going to do part of the presentation this evening, and I'm going to turn it over for the bulk of the presentation to Frank Messinio, who's our architect, who can talk to you about the actual projects and hopefully answer your questions as we go along. It's okay to ask questions as we're speaking. You don't have to wait until the end, because I don't know how much time you all have. I want to make sure that you do have the opportunity to ask your questions and hopefully get them answered as well. Okay, so we're here because the Riverdale Regional School District is requesting funding for school building renovations here in the District of Riverdale for capital infrastructure and classroom renovations via referendum vote on December 12th. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about why it goes this way, and not to insult anyone's intelligence, I'm sure most of you do know why we have to go to referendum, but we do want to cover that anyway for those people who may be at home watching and have those questions. But our motto is "21st Century Buildings for 21st Century Learners." So each year, the district administration facilities and maintenance departments work to maintain and improve our existing facilities to support all of our programs. That's something that happens in and out every single school year here at Riverdale and all school districts throughout Bergen County, of course. In spite of our 2% tax levy cap, as you probably know, we have, the Board of Education and administration have successfully addressed many building needs within our operating budget, and these are things that happen throughout the course of the school year. And in another slide, I'll introduce you to some of the projects that have taken place over the last 10 or so years through the use of capital funding. The district, as far as answering why now, the district has significant debt service rolling off from a previous referendum, which was about 20 years ago, over $20 million referendum that the voters had passed at that time. That debt service is rolling off this year, which is why the board thought it was a good time to take on an additional debt lesser than the previous debt, but still a debt just the same, that it would be a significant offset to the tax impact to the community. This would be an ideal time to do that. So just a little bit of history as to why now we're dealing with some aging schools in our district, some of which, some of the different parts of the schools are going back to the 1950s, 1952. Some of the original architecture is still here, the mechanical and plumbing, and some of the infrastructure has changed, but some still exists because it's still workable and still usable, but has reached the end of its life expectancy. By allowing our district to finance these projects that we are proposing in the referendum, it is our hope that if passed by the voters, that these costs will be spread out for the future generation, for those who are actually accessing these facilities and using these schools at that time. So here's a graphic for you to talk to, that explains to you kind of how the referendum works if it is passed. So the entire project, as you see on the left side here, is $18.7 million. Should the referendum pass, we already know that we're receiving $6.4 million in savings for Riverdale. This is money that the state allocates for our projects because they are education-related and/or renovations to our existing district. A 34% savings equates to a $6.4 million price in aid for River Edge and for Riverdale taxpayers. So the debt service aid from the state helps to reduce or pay down the bond, and this helps to reduce the impact that the taxpayer will bear. So we have already received the approval letters from the Department of Education, which certified the approved aid numbers. So these are not what we estimate we're going to get. This is what we will get.
Jim, if I could just point out, this presentation is on the district's website. So the information contained herein, you guys can find after the presentation. It's, everything that you're going to see here is also on the district's website.
Okay, so I had mentioned before that there are a number of projects that have taken place over the last 10 or so years and maybe even longer that the district undertakes using their capital funding. And the district puts aside capital funds every year to take care of these kinds of maintenance items and what I call big-ticket items that come along every couple of years. So these are some of the ones, some of the projects that have taken place, both at the high school and at the middle school. Some are the same in both buildings, and some are specific to a specific building, but you see before you branding and graphics, secure vestibule upgrades in both the middle school and the high school. Of course, here at the high school, where we have the athletic facility, the track and turf field replacement, electrical service upgrades in both the middle school and the high school. That has a lot to do with technology, and anything that we have added over the years requires a different, I guess, power structure or power grid or power sources. We've had to update our electrical services over the years to make sure that we can maintain and also give us the ability to grow. In the middle school, an LLD classroom and some renovations to first and second-floor science labs have taken place in the last several years, all through capital budget, with no additional expenditures from the taxpayers, just money that the Board of Education has wisely budgeted for over the years. So the process. So where did this all begin? At the beginning, Solutions Architecture, which is who Frank represents here, has began to work with the administration in order to prioritize and to recognize and identify the different needs that we had in the district. We brought in professionals to help us to identify the issues that we had and also give us some solutions and some practical solutions to things that we can do to make any of our issues better or to make improvements to our district. So we've been challenged to consider ways to improve our building's existing infrastructure and projects that ensure the safety and security of all of our students and also for functional schools. Challenged for ways, or two ways, to consider ways to improve student experiences with projects that really directly impact our students. That was a big impetus from the board, but they wanted projects that our students could see and that really could experience while they were here. Although a lot, there is a lot of infrastructure in here as well, as Frank will explain. There is a lot for every one of our students to see and experience to improve their educational experience here. So in May 2022, the district commissioned Solutions Architecture to provide a district-wide audit. They audited all of our facilities in the middle school and the high school. That's infrastructure facilities, classrooms, grounds, building, the envelope, everything that we have here. In the summer of 2022, the two schools were evaluated against a number of criteria brought forward by Solutions Architecture, and recommendations for a number of capital improvements were made and different projects were made to the Board of Education. The audit represented a high-level review of buildings and noted issues from code compliance, health and safety of students and staff, the building envelope, the mechanical engineering and plumbing infrastructure. Not all the work is required to be completed, but we wanted a comprehensive study so that we knew what projects we could choose from that list. So now, moving forward to November of '22, about a year ago, the completed facilities audit was presented to the administration and to the Facilities Committee of the Board of Education, and potential projects were reviewed. The original report identified $25.6 million worth of capital and educational classroom improvement projects. That was not the number that the board was comfortable with, and that's why we moved down to a different number, as you saw a couple of slides previous. So January 23 to the present, Solutions Architecture coordinated meetings with the administration, with the superintendent, Mr. Fletcher, and then myself, the principals, the faculty, the supervisors to review all the educational needs of all the buildings so that they could start to prioritize the plans and the projects that they wanted to bring together. So concept plans and budget estimates were prepared for all of those selected projects, and the committee determined that the final plan, which was presented to the board with what they believed to be a more palatable amount, the 18-point-some-odd-million for the referendum. Other goals: maximizing benefits to instruction, the arts, special education, athletics. Many of the board members use this phrase, it's not our slogan, but it's kind of like a junior slogan, that there's something in it for everyone, and that was something that the board was very conscious about. They wanted something in this referendum for all of our students, not just athletes, not just the arts, not just special needs students. They tried to bring together projects that would incorporate the school life of so many different aspects of our school. Unfortunately, much-needed infrastructures, projects like mechanical, electrical, security that you don't often see, maybe you experience them in other ways, are very important, but they also are undervalued often. But it was important for the board to look at things that we needed, not just things that we wanted. Many of these things are the things we want as well, but they had to be needs as well for us to bring a responsible referendum to the taxpayers. Some more priorities, and basically you see the three here: enhanced learning environments, student and staff safety, and keeping up to date with operations. We wanted our learning environments to be enhanced for our present students, but also we wanted learning environments that are flexible, and Frank's going to talk a lot about that, the flexibility of our learning environments and our classrooms so they can change over time as our needs change. We have some rooms that are obsolete. They were built for different purposes many years ago, and we refitted them and made them useful for us, but there's things that we can do that are better, and that's what Frank's going to talk to you about when he gets into the architectural piece of it. Of course, student and staff safety is a priority all the time, so any of the changes to the existing structures, we have student-staff safety in mind as well. And of course, keeping up to date with operations, you know, infrastructure, HVAC, and the things that, everybody's hearing the HVAC right now humming. All those things that go into making our school climate safe for all of our students and staff, those operations are crucial to keeping us in good condition and running and moving forward. So those are some of the priorities that the board had in mind, and that is what was communicated to Solutions Architecture throughout the process. So just to kind of encapsulate it here, creating exciting learning environments that have a high visual impact, because that's always helpful, and directly impact our students and our staff. So these are some of the items that Frank is going to be speaking to you about in a moment. Renovated steam and STEM labs, and some recreated in many different ways for the auditorium renovations, both at the middle school and the high school, which does impact a very high segment of our population. Art classroom renovations and upgrades, nutritional living and wellness classroom renovations, specifically in the middle school, special education classroom renovations for our 18 to 21 program, and others as well, and athletic locker room renovations and gymnasium and all that business as well. Okay, to walk you through the projects, Frank, they're all yours.
Great, thank you. So what's included in this referendum? You know, there's a lot of things that we're going to talk about, but I want to let you know that in designing and concept for the referendum, a lot of these things are not designed completely. This is, for the state of New Jersey, we don't design the projects in total before the referendum. The reason for that is that were we to go out and design and engineer all these projects to the hilt, you would be paying for design and engineering fees for something that, if the referendum failed, you would have nothing to show for it. So what we submitted to the Department of Education are conceptual drawings, and what you're going to see here are conceptual ideas of what these projects could be. Once the referendum, if and when the referendum passes, then we will be designing, meeting with the administration, and going into the design of each one of these rooms, the faculty, the supervisors, and making sure that we're ultimately getting what these rooms need. So let's talk a little bit about, first, capital projects. For the district, both schools are going to receive a series of capital projects. This is the infrastructure. These are the items that we've talked about that don't necessarily, you don't necessarily see. You walk by them every day, but you don't know they're there. One of the things that we're doing are district-wide security measures, and what it involves is a ballistics film on every lower level, first-floor window and door in both buildings. Now, what this does is it doesn't stop a bullet, but what it will do is buy time. Instead of a perpetrator breaking the glass and entering the building, it will prevent them from simply walking through the building. It will take them minutes to break through and get into the building. So every door that you see, every lower-level window that you see will have this film on it that will create time. So that's a big district-wide security measure. Various mechanical and HVAC upgrades. These include everything from unit ventilator replacements in classrooms, ventilation upgrades in the kitchen, kitchen exhaust, air conditioning in places that don't have them, as well as controls updates. These are the building controls. These are what make the heat come on and the cold air come on in the summer. So we're updating that so that there's a building control system instead of being able to activate it manually or through thermostats. Various electrical and fire alarm system upgrades, and the big part of this is that they're all now going to be tied to emergency generators. The district currently doesn't have emergency generation, so what this is going to do is allow us to provide critical service continuation in the event of a catastrophe. Should the power go down, the district's generator will kick on. It can provide community support in rooms like this, all emergency lighting, lighting, refrigeration for the kitchen, and as well as technology and data. All those server closets and cabinets would still have power in the event of catastrophe. Gymnasium floor replacement. The wood floors have seen their, beyond their useful life, so we're going to replace those gym floors. Those will get all-new graphics, and in both schools, they'll receive both of those. There's some asbestos tile flooring that still needs to be replaced. It's not a bad thing. The asbestos tile floor lasts longer than some of the tile we put down today. The only time it causes a problem is when it becomes brittle and breaks up, and the district does an amazing job at maintaining all of the floors that they have in all the facilities. But we have a couple areas within the building, the high school maintenance wing, for example, which is actually getting work, which you'll see in a little bit, but that's going to get asbestos flooring replacement. We're going to go through and we're going to take that up, as opposed to covering it, and make sure that it's out of the building so that we don't have any other problems with it. Graphics and branding. A lot of the design work that we do involves graphics and branding. It is a high-impact, low-cost solution to the work that we do. So when you see the renovated rooms, you're going to see that there's an opportunity to provide school spirit, provide schools branding throughout the design that we do, which really enhances the overall environment that these children are going to be working in. Now let's talk a little bit about the educational projects, those projects that directly impact your children. At the high school, we're going to take this by floor level at the high school. At the lower level of the high school, we're going to create, one of the charges was to eliminate underutilized space or make better use of underutilized space. And at the lower level of the high school, particularly in this area, there are several rooms, storage rooms and maintenance rooms that are underutilized. They're not being used, and the district had a need to find a home for the 18- to 21-year-old special education program. We looked at the space. We evaluated it based on its current layout, and we were able to transform that, which you'll see, into a space for the 18- to 21-year-old program. The boys' athletic locker room and the girls' athletic locker rooms, they're pretty much original. They've pretty much been here for many, many years. The lockers are not in great shape. The space is underutilized. Anybody that knows shower areas in high school and middle school locker rooms are basically transformed into storage rooms because they were the once-big open shower that everybody would take a shower. Nobody does that anymore. So they're underutilized as well, and those are both of these blue boxes that you'll see. So we're going to do a blow-up of each of these plans, and this is the underutilized space that we're transforming into the 18- to 21-year-old program. And the key here is to design spaces for life skills, spaces where the students can receive instruction, where they have independent workrooms, where they can learn cooking, where they can learn hygiene. So there are spaces that will be set up to almost look like an apartment. So here's an instruction space. There will be, you know, storage areas, but there will also be a bedroom setup, learn how to make your bed, be able to do things that are involved in life skills for students. We will have a kitchen area, kitchenette area, learn how to cook, learn how to prepare your meals, a toilet room, a toilet area, so that they can brush their teeth. Things like that that they need to be able to maintain and do, this program will allow it. There are two separate areas for instruction. There are some additional storage areas, but this entire space will be gutted. It will receive new flooring, wall-ceiling finishes, LED lighting, and then mechanical and electrical and plumbing upgrades as well. So this is what that room looks like now, or what those rooms look like now. You can see, this is a big, open space. It's underutilized. There's a counter on the wall. It's not really being taken advantage of. This has a bunch of racks in it for storage that can be put elsewhere. So we want to take these rooms, and we want to convert them into something like this. This is an example of what's been done in other districts, and it provides a space for interaction, collaboration, as well as learning life skills. So this is a big change for that underutilized space. The boys' and girls' athletic locker rooms, again, these spaces are, we want to create better functional spaces for the students. The lockers, which you'll see in a picture, we want to replace the lockers. We want to provide spaces for athletics and sports lockers. We want to take care of and address the issue of these shower rooms that are underutilized, and we do that by providing individual stalls, similar to a toilet stall. This is a shower stall, so students can shower in privacy. They don't have to worry about that. And in middle school and high school sports, it's really big for wrestling. You have to shower before a match. It's something that's critical. This gives the students the ability to do that privately and not like we used to do when I was in school. New lockers, new layout, lower lockers throughout, again, new flooring, wall-ceiling finishes as well as LED lighting, and then without a doubt, mechanical upgrades for ventilation, because as we all know, locker rooms aren't the most fresh spaces around. So this is an idea of what the existing locker room looks like. As you can see, there are tall lockers. There are split lockers. This area in the middle is that shower area. Again, it's being used for storage. It's not being used for what it was intended. And in a school, square footage is all about utilization of space. The more square footage we have that's not used or used ineffectively, that's money that you're wasting. So we would provide, this is an opportunity of what we could do. Whenever we rearrange or reorganize a locker room, the lockers in the middle are lower, which allows supervision across the room. It gives greater supervision for the coaches and PE teachers. There are individual lockers. They don't need to be full-size lockers, so we're creating greater efficiency. We have the ability to put more lockers in than what currently exist. On the first floor of the high school, we have basically three, two projects combined. One is the auditorium, which you see here in orange, and that includes the stage. And then we have two classrooms that are currently used for STEM and science, which are going to receive renovations and upgrades so that the program works better. So the intent here at the auditorium is to design functional renovations for both the front of the house, which is where the audience sits, and the back of house, which is the stage. We're going to design accommodations for acoustics, lighting, and sound for the stage and for the main space. This involves acoustical panels, acoustical review. It involves looking at the front of the stage and how that works, and it involves dealing with new finishes throughout, creating a nicer space than what currently exists, wall finishes, ceiling finishes, LED lighting, as well as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing upgrades. So the image on the left is the existing auditorium. As you can see, it's dimly lit. While it did receive new seating previously, the intent would be to look at this auditorium, redesign it, create a space that could provide more lighting, a brighter atmosphere, and a greater space for the students to use. We want these spaces to support the curriculum. We want it to be able to support the theater program and the arts program to its fullest. The STEM and STEAM classroom at the high school, right now, the way they're set up, there's a classroom here, a classroom here, and then an office area in the center. The intent is to keep that concept the same, so our hope is to transform these rooms with minimal demolition, but allowing them to become more functional and more flexible. Dr. Albro talked about flexibility being one of the key components of anything that we did here. The idea to have a room that has tables that have wheels on the bottom of them, that you can reorganize this room. These six tables can become a conference table. They can become a U-shaped table. They can allow students to interact in different ways to support the curriculum that the teachers want to go. So we're going to design spaces, a maker space, electronics, robotics, group learning, various workspaces within these two rooms. We'll get more into the design of it once and if and when the referendum passes. So this is an idea, this is what the room currently looks like. Again, it's furniture, it's computers, but it's a big, open space, and we want to make greater use of it. The space on the right is what other districts are doing right now. It's a design that we did for a nearby district, and it's, the room serves multiple functions from robotics to woodworking to being able to make things or break things. There's a breaker space. They have a paint booth. So whatever direction the district's curriculum wants to go, the room should be able to support it. Now let's look at the middle school. Now, because of the need for equity and wanting to look at the same programs, a lot of the work is very similar. So on the first floor at the middle school, we're addressing auditorium renovations, which include the second-floor balcony, art room renovations, STEM and STEAM room renovations, and the nutritional, living, and wellness classroom upgrades. So auditorium, art room, STEM and STEAM, I mean nutritional, living, and wellness, and then STEM and STEAM classrooms. So in the auditorium, again, the concept is the same, to redesign the auditorium space to provide a more inviting space, something that works better with acoustics and lighting, both front of house, back of house, as well as the auditorium balcony. New finishes, wall finishes, ceilings, lighting, flooring, MEP upgrades. This is the existing auditorium. What's unique about this auditorium is there are risers, built-in risers, that walk you up to the front of the stage. It's a great feature to have. You don't have to set up other bleachers or risers to be able to get up on stage. The idea here would be to redress this auditorium, take care of the stage, take care of the flooring in the front of the house, but you can see in the image of what it could look like. These are acoustical panels that are designed to enhance the sound in the auditorium without microphones, make sure that sound is either absorbed or reflected as needed, and we'll design that. As far as the STEM and STEAM classrooms, this is basically an identical plan for the middle school as it was for the high school. It's basically a very similar layout, two classrooms on either side, a prep area in the center, a service area in the center, to design spaces that will follow maker space, electronics, robotics, group learning, as well as various work areas in these two spaces. Again, the existing space, this is more, you know, similar to a woodworking shop. You can still see there's an exhaust system there. If that program stays in the next design, we will update the exhaust system, but these are other areas. This is what it could look like. A maker or model space separate from the main space, adequate storage for wood or other materials for crafting, work tables that can be used in groups or alone. So the intent is to redesign and redevelop so that these students can take advantage of a growing curriculum. The art classroom, very similarly, to design spaces that are flexible and furnished in a manner that creates optimal learning for the students. One of the big things about art spaces is that they invariably don't have enough storage. They don't have enough places to dry artwork. They don't have gallery spaces to show off the work of the students. So the existing art room is what it looks like, fixed tables, a lot of storage areas. These cabinets have probably been painted over 100 times, you know, since they were installed. We love the peach color, almond color, you know, peach colors that they have. We may try to keep that. I'm kidding. But this is what an art room could look like. There's a gallery space, a space for pinups, for pinup of the work. There's a space for displaying work along the perimeter, plenty of storage bins and art implements. As you can see, every one of these tables has a wheel on it. So these tables can be moved, reconfigured, put into different arrangements so that the students can work in ways that support the curriculum. Nutritional, living, wellness classroom renovations. When I went to school, this was called the Home Ec classroom. We had Home Ec. We don't have Home Ec anymore. Home Ec is now a lot more adaptive, a lot more proactive. Now, every Home Ec classroom that we do, or nutritional living classroom we do, is like a scene out of Chopped. The kitchens are advanced. Everything is flexible. Everything is movable. We want flexible furnishings. We want a portable demo table. We want different kitchen setups. It's no longer a setup to learn how to cook at home. It's a setup for what happens in the real world, in a culinary kitchen. What are these students going to school? What might they have an interest in? It's all to explore and allow them to develop when it comes to learning about the nutritional values of what they're doing, cook what they're doing. But having flexible furnishings in this space will allow them to even have events. What they prepare, they serve. It gives them the whole thing from cooking to the table. This is the space now. Both of these pictures are the existing space. As you can see, the space is very cluttered. There's a lot going on in each of these areas. Cabinets on the wall, you know, it's not very efficient, and it's not very well-laid out in terms of what a new culinary classroom or nutritional living classroom could be. What you're looking at in these images are what other school districts have done for their nutritional, living classrooms, for their wellness classrooms. It creates a movable table situation. It creates culinary kitchen setups along the perimeter. It creates a pantry area. So everything is flexible. Everything works towards allowing them to push these tables together and do a banquet. Everything works towards allowing them to push these tables together and do a banquet based on everything that they created that day. So the idea here is to create a classroom that goes beyond what we used to have. Chalk and talk, sitting, learning. It's to allow them to take control of the classroom. So let's talk about the cost, because everybody wants to know what it costs. This is probably the most important question in the slideshow and where we go from here. So in terms of the cost of construction, you're going to see a number of different slides that break down and show the construction, as well as the debt service aid. And then, we're going to get into tax impact items. So the projects in this slide are broken down by school. The total capital projects for the high school is about $3.6 million in capital work. Those are the unit ventilators, and the lighting, and the security, and all of those things that you saw that we talked about for both slides. Total of the educational projects at the high school, the auditorium, the STEM lab, the STEAM lab, the 18 to 21-year-old program, $5.2 million. A total of $8.8 million at the high school. At the middle school, we've got about $6.3 million in capital projects. Again, those infrastructure projects at the middle school. It's kind of a flipped formula. At the educational project level, we're looking at about $3.5 million worth of educational-level projects. A total of about $9.8 million worth of work. So all total capital projects are about $9.9 million, and educational projects are about $8.7 million. It's a pretty fair balance when we're trying to put work together for both buildings. A total of $18.6 million. As Dr. Albro mentioned in the earlier slide, $6.4 million has already been approved by the Department of Education. Why is the Department of Education giving us $6.4 million? They're doing so because any project that's tied to education or renovations is eligible for state aid. All of the projects we submitted to the Department of Ed were eligible for state aid. Therefore, we're able to receive 34% in debt service aid for these projects. That reduces the $18.7 million worth of work that we can do to $12.3 million. That's the taxable impact. Another similar slide, only this one includes the debt service aid. So you can see that there's the $18.6 million. It's $9.8 at the middle school and $8.8 at the high school. We're receiving about $3 million in debt service aid at the high school, and we're receiving almost $3.4 million in debt service aid at the middle school. That reduces the approved debt service aid to about 6.4, but that reduces that overall project to $12.4 million. Now, one of the things that I should point out is that we use a number 34% for the debt service aid. The PEC letters received from the state talk about 40%. The regulations call for 40%. But since 2009, the state has only paid 85% of that 40% that they say in the regs. So we don't calculate 40% anymore. We only calculate what the state has paid since 2009. That's why our numbers show you receiving 34% in debt service aid. Again, those letters have been received. That money is secured. If the referendum passes, $6.4 million offsets the cost of this referendum. The finance team has accounted for a 4% interest rates for all the calculations you see here today. Obviously, interest rates could fluctuate prior to the referendum or after the referendum when bonds are sold. They could be lower, they could be higher by a certain percentage. But right now, based on the rates that we're seeing, this is the number that's being held for these numbers. So let's talk a little bit about what the tax impact is and the debt service reduction you're going to see. We talked about the fact that the district has bonds that are going to be paid off this school year from a previous referendum 20 years ago. Right now, the school has no other outstanding debt. By putting forth this referendum, there will be debt associated with this referendum if it's approved. Residents with an average assessed home of $567,000 in Oradell are currently paying about $201 for the debt service aid on the existing referendum. The cost of the new referendum is expected to be $142.72 on that same value of home, which would result in a reduction of $58.60 in the debt service for that homeowner. Residents with an average assessed home of $395,273 in River Edge are currently paying $174.54 for their debt service share. The cost of the new project is $123. So it will actually be a debt service reduction of about $50. Just another way to look at it, another way to show it graphically. So if the referendum passes, that includes all the capital infrastructure projects, the auditorium, STEM, nutritional, living, wellness, special education, and art classrooms. That total cost of the referendum results in a $12.3 million taxable number, net number, based upon these home values. And it's the assessed value of your home. It's not the market value of your home. Those numbers are gotten from the tax office or your tax bill. And these are the two decreases that you're going to see in the debt service aid. This projected tax impact has only to do with this referendum. Has nothing to do with anything else that's going on in town or may go on in town. It has to do with the tax impact for the referendum. This assumed rate is 4% for 20 years. And again, debt service aid calculations have been finalized by the Department of Ed. We're going to show it to you another way, just so that we have all the bases covered. So current tax impact for both towns, $201 for Oradell, $174 for River Edge. If you vote yes for the capital and educational projects in the referendum, this debt will roll off this year. This debt will replace it with the new referendum. $142, $123. So $58.60 and $50.80 less than what's currently being paid for debt service. Is that all? I know it's difficult, but make sure if there's any questions, you guys are certainly welcome to ask them. So what does your vote mean? Obviously, you can vote yes or you can vote no. If you vote yes, the district will receive $18.7 million of capital and educational renovations, as we talked about tonight, with $6.4 million in debt service aid for a reduction in debt service of $58 and $50 respectively. If you vote no, and the referendum fails, the district is going to continue to have to make the necessary changes out of the regular capital budget. And there's no way that the regular capital budget with the 2% cap can make the amount and number of changes that we're proposing here. So what happens? Things take longer. Costs go up as things take longer. And the biggest issue right here is that because you're doing it at a capital budget, it's 100% of the cost. There's no 34% debt service aid. So you're going to pay 100% of the cost if it's done out of capital. We have an opportunity here with the debt rolling off to have a very minimal, minimal impact to the debt service for the district. On the district's website, there is a link to a tax impact calculator. We're trying to make this easy, and a district wants to make things transparent. The board wants everything to be transparent for you. So while I talked about the average assessed home in both towns, you may not have the average assessed home. Your house may be worth more, it may be worth less. This calculator allows you, right now, you can see that it has $567,000 in Oradell, $395 in River Edge. It's got the same numbers that you saw on the slide presentation. If you went in and you lived in Oradell and you had a home that was worth $400,000, you entered $400,000, it will tell you what your tax impact is. There is no question. You will know what your impact is. If you have an $800,000 home, it will tell you what your tax impact. Nothing is left to question. Nothing is left to interpretation. District wants you to have all the information prior to the vote on the 12th. Oh, just another point. It is the assessed value of your home. It is not the market value. So if you don't know it, you can call the tax assessor's office. You can get it. It is not what you can sell your home for. Obviously, in most cases, you can sell your home a lot more than what it's assessed for. Oh, and if you're currently participating in the New Jersey Senior Freeze Program, your taxes remain unaffected by this referendum, whether it fails or passes. So let's talk a little bit about facts and frequently asked questions. The district financial experts, as I said, they're carrying a 4% interest rate for this. Depending upon where those rates are at the time of bond sale, the rates could be lower or higher. We have experience in the architectural and construction industry. We have experienced increases in construction. You all know, nobody hasn't heard about the $12 2x4 during COVID. So prices have come down, but they haven't come down all the way. So we've designed a budget that includes escalators and multipliers to account for escalations in cost. We can't see the future. We don't know where it's going. But we have to complete these projects for the budget of what the referendum has in it. The district cannot spend a penny more than what is approved by the voters. They can't pull it from another fund. They can't pull it from another account. The designs shown in the presentation I mentioned earlier are conceptual. It's not what it ultimately could look like. It could. I mean, if we hit it on the mark, it could. But the idea would be if and when the referendum passes, we're going to meet with the district, the administration, the teachers. We're going to design each of those spaces so that they perform the way they need to. Can more be spent? I just alluded to it. Not a penny more can be spent. Can't be brought from another budget. Can't be brought from another account. So we can increase the budget if we wanted to. If, for some reason, prices escalate as we start to come in with projects, and they go up as we get through, and there are projects that we can't possibly do because of budget, or we need to put projects out at another time or go out to bid again, those are things that we're going to work at if and when the referendum passes. Very simple question, very simple answer. Will your taxes go up with this referendum? The answer is no. It will not go up with this referendum. Whatever we've calculated and figured out here, it results in those reductions in debt service that you saw. What happens to students during construction? Students and staff during construction? Safety is always a priority when we do any project in a school. We've been doing projects in this school for over 25 years. So we always try to separate students and staff from construction. We always try to plan construction when students aren't in the building. That is optimal. However, given the number of projects that are being done, this project will take more than one summer. We can't complete all this work in one summer. So there is work that we might possibly do during the school year, but we will phase it and organize it so that it is done when students are not in school. The window film is typically going to be done on off-hours, 3 to 11 shift. By the time the kids come back in, that work is done in those classrooms. So there's no impact to their learning process. Potential construction schedule. We have to, our goal is not just passing a referendum. Our goal is making sure these projects come in on budget. So for us, it's a chess game. What's the best time to put these projects out? If I put a project out in April or May, contractors already have work for the summer. So they're going to throw high numbers at the project. If I put a project out in October or November, they're looking for work. So their numbers are going to be tighter. It's proven, it's statistical, it's not my opinion. So at the end of the day, we're going to try to plan these bids for these projects at strategic times so that we get the best pricing for these projects. And while some projects could begin construction during the early summer of 2024, the fact that the referendum's in December, we still have to design them, put the bid documents together, and get them out to bid. So if there are projects, like the film, that we can get out in April, early April, end of March, great. As soon as we start to hit May, it doesn't make sense to put the project out. So we're going to plan it, and we're going to give us the best pricing, give us bids that are going to give us the best pricing. Projects that require more time to develop, those are the projects we need to meet with the district on. Go into the classroom, look at the space, talk to the teachers, figure out how to design the space. Those are going to take a little bit longer. So they may be the following summer or the following summer after that. So we're planning to get these projects done as quickly and efficiently as possible, but we don't want to jeopardize budget for rushing projects out. And then, allowing flexibility in the scheduling allows us to bid at the best times and get the best pricing. Senior freeze, I talked about this before. Taxes will not, if you're part of the senior freeze program, and this is an important concept for seniors, if you are participating in this program, your taxes will not be affected by the referendum. Project priorities. I alluded to the fact, if the unlikely thing happens where the budget prices skyrocket over our projected escalators and multipliers, the district has made it clear that their priority is to address the infrastructure items, the things that affect the school, that will prevent it from operating. The boiler, the BMS system, the building management system. Those are things that if they go bad, we can't operate the building anyway. Classroom spaces, we're going to try to do everything that we put in here, and district is obligated to do everything that's in here. But if pricing comes really, really high, this is what the district has indicated to be their priority. Here's a question that we get all the time. Why hasn't the district done any of this work before? And I have to say, I've been in this district a long time, and the business administrator and the administration and the board has been very proactive about doing this work. And those that came, the boards that came before it have always used capital and maintenance reserve monies to do projects in this building, from electrical service upgrades to the flooring upgrades to classroom renovations. Because of the 2% cap, it is physically impossible to do the amount of work that's been done or that's been proposed without a referendum. So it's been nearly 20 years since the last referendum. There are classrooms that are in need of help to support this growing curriculum. The teachers, the supervisors, the administration, they do an amazing job at trying to deliver instruction to your students. They need classrooms that support it and allow it to be enhanced. Last piece. There's a QR code up here. There's a referendum link. There is also a referendum email address. Everything that you saw here tonight is on the district's website. It's broken down. It's not one big presentation. There's a voiceover presentation that was completed by Dr. Albro. You'll hear him talk about this presentation. So it's no longer you going online and clicking on a slide presentation and drawing your own conclusions. You're going to hear the presentation as you heard it today. Tell your friends it's up there, because they can listen to it in its entirety. The referendum is also broken down into what we call technical information packages. So instead of watching the 58 slides that you just saw here today, if you want to see the tax impact stuff, go to the tax impact information package. If you want to see the scope and the projects that we're talking about doing, go to the scope of work package. If you want to go to the tax impact calculator, that's there. Everything is broken down for ease of use, transparency for you to see it, for you to tell two friends, and they tell two friends, and so on, and so on. So the idea here is scan the QR code. You'll see them. The district has trifold brochures. There will be a campaign that goes on that will make sure that the information goes out. The district is going to do more presentations. Those will be listed on the website. So the idea here is to give you as much information as possible prior to the vote on December 12th. If there are questions, send your questions to thereferendum@riverdale.org. It's an email address that you can send questions to. We will respond to those questions. If they're district questions, they will respond. If they're construction or architectural questions, we will respond. They will all be in the frequently asked questions section of the district's website. Everything is there for you to see. That concludes the presentation, unless you have questions.
So you were talking about the state aid.
I'm sorry. It's just because it's public record and public eating, you just take your name. I'm just wondering.
Cindy Dequay, River Edge. My question is about the state aid. So you mentioned that they're going to give that $6 million. So how does that actually get paid into the system, into the project?
So it doesn't get paid into the project. Every year, the district will have debt service payment to make. The debt service payment will make a 66% debt service payment, and the state will make the balance of it. So the district never gets the money. It's not a grant, but the state will offset whatever the district has to pay annually with their share. Anybody else?
That's my talk.
Takes you up pretty good.
Bobby Kryakos, River Edge. A couple of questions on the cost, right? Number one, you mentioned, even if you put out the bid 2024, construction would possibly start in '25 or '26. You also mentioned about inflation, supply chain issues, and of course, being driven more equipment, everything. So is that all captured in the cost? You mentioned about markups in your estimation. So is that all captured in the cost you mentioned about markups in your estimation? It's all captured, okay. Second, you said if you don't do it, the infrastructure is failing, buildings are failing, equipment is failing. So if we get to that, let's say the referendum doesn't go through, right? If we get to that, what would be the cost, like at least the order of magnitude of maintaining the building in a state of good repair?
So, I mean, those costs are going to vary, and anytime we do work in an emergency, it costs us more money. Anytime we plan for renovations, we can plan for them and budget for the money. So the facilities audit that was done initially to establish the parameters for this referendum, that's a useful tool that the district has from now into perpetuity. The district can meet and look at that on an annual basis, develop a budget of projects that still need to be done. As you saw, the list included $25.6 million worth of projects. Not everything has to be done, a lot of it's code that maybe you're grandfathered in, but there are projects that still need to be done. The business administrator, superintendent, and the board are going to look at their budget for the next year, and they're going to determine what projects take priority. So if the referendum doesn't pass, we're going to need to figure out how to prioritize and do this work over the next so many years, because obviously, you can't do all this in one year with the cap. So it's not really, you know, a direct answer to you, because we don't know, but it's going to involve planning to be able to get it done, and you're going to lose the 6.4 million in debt service aid, because there is no aid for these projects. You're welcome.
We have money that we put aside for capital ventures, and that money can be utilized in those, God forbid, just in case emergencies, when equipment fails or roofs fail or things like that. The board has plans in their five-year projected plan for different capital projects, but that money can be moved for emergent issues as they come around. We don't need your name again, we know who you are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they planning, is the plan to do the junior high, sorry, middle school, I'm from here for a long time, the middle school and the senior high school at the same time? Projects at both times, or?
So again, whichever makes it more beneficial. Anytime we do multiple projects at the same time and get a greater size project, we get economy of scale. When we break it up and do small projects, it costs more. So the idea would be to be strategic about these bids. If we're doing the auditorium at both schools, we could try to get one contractor to do both. Or we could try to put in a contract that's maybe contract A for the middle school, contract B for the high school. If the cheaper contractor doesn't get both, then maybe there's a cheap contractor at this school and a cheaper contractor at that school, and we have two contractors. Why two contractors works is because of schedule, because you don't have one guy trying to finish both projects. So we have to kind of be strategic about how we do this. But the idea would be if we're doing similar projects or like projects, the more we can group together, the bigger the economy of scale we receive.
On that answer, I've had a couple of referendum projects in my previous district, and that's very common, to have two different contractors in two different buildings doing essentially the same job, because sometimes it's more cost effective to bring it in that way. You get a low bid, lower bid from each one of them. You're welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening, brother. Colton, Steve, River Edge. A couple of quick questions. So thanks, the design looks really good. So how should we think about where this would put Riverdale, like relative to other school districts, from a facilities point of view? Like, would you say we're, you know, not exactly, like, you know, top 20%, bottom 20%, middle? Like, where do you think this puts us after the design issue kind of think about?
So there's two, there's two questions, and I'm going to leave the educational question to Dr. Albro, but from an architectural standpoint, there are many school districts that are doing the work that you're doing, or have done it already. You want to create classrooms that support the curriculum, that allow the teachers to expand the curriculum, to do better. Anytime you can do that, and our spaces can be designed to allow the curriculum to grow, it's going to put you off the charts in terms of what other districts are doing. River Edge is no different in terms of other districts trying to do this kind of stuff, trying to pass a referendum, get the work done, trying to do it out of their capital budget. We want to see the classrooms improve and succeed. So from an architectural standpoint, we're doing a lot of this work right now. It's just a matter of making sure that we can do it here, and what that does to the educational component here.
And I would agree. I think we're already there in that top 20%. This is going to help us maintain our position and hopefully grow that position over time, over the next 20 years, as we're paying off these bond referendums. This is going to give us the ability to grow and to continue to get better.
Okay, great. And just out of curiosity, how did you guys come up with the 12-12 date for the election?
They give us certain dates. I think there's five dates during the course of the year where you can go out to referendum, and that was the one that they chose.
And it can't be done during the normal?
No. Well, I don't know that it can't be, but I don't know if that was one of the dates.
Yes, so. There are five days, five dates that can be done for a referendum. November is a date that can be done with the general election. Most school districts don't do it with the general election, because it mixes the politics and the school district, you know, together. It could work in some places and other places, but most people try to stay away. And statistically, the majority of referenda are done in December and March. The most success ratings are in December and March for referenda that have been done over the last 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hi, Susan Garcia from Oradell. How does the 18 million or 18.9 million compare to what is currently in reserves? So how much of that, how much is currently in reserves and like comparison?
I'm looking at our business administrator, I don't know off the top of my head. Good question, thank you.
Okay, I'll repeat what you said so that we can be heard, right?
Yeah, I have to say, 1.7 million in capital reserve at this time. Cindy.
What has to occur as far as the voting goes? Is it 50% is to pass it? What has to be done?
It's one vote more than, more yes than no to pass.
10 people?
Could be 10 people.
Total people.
It's one vote more yes than no. And one of the important things here is that the people that have a vested interest in this passing need to vote. We've been in districts where there's been such a positive end swell for the referendum, and people didn't go to vote, because they're like, oh, it's going to pass, it's, oh, it's a no-brainer. Everybody's going to go vote. And they stayed home, and it lost by four votes. We don't want that. We want to make sure that, you know, we're giving you the information, the district's giving you the information. The polls are likely going to be open from 6 to 8:30, 6 to 8 o'clock, 6:30 to 8 o'clock, at your regular polling places, which they're going to be up on the website as well. But we're giving everybody the opportunity to go vote. So we want to get everybody to go out and vote, regardless of how positive this is. Yes, there are absentee ballots and mail-ins, there are also links to those are on the district's website. If you had students that are of voting age that are around, and still have an address here, they can vote too.
And something Frank was talking about before in answering one of the questions, that more information is going to be coming out in social media and through our normal means of communication from the district over the next couple of weeks and months as we get closer to the actual referendum date. But it's generally a rule of thumb to stay away from the general election, because that's a different election, and we don't want to involve the school with the general election, the town election. So there'll be less up until the beginning of November, but I'm sure after the general election is over, you're going to see more and more information coming out from us about the referendum vote.
Okay, John, River Edge. I have two questions. For whatever reason, I have a great presentation, by the way, but whatever reason the referendum doesn't pass, will it be proposed next year again? How does it work? And second question is, actually, let's leave it at first.
So, I mean, my guess is that the board would have to sit and discuss, so we'd have to determine how, how much did it lose by? Was it a close call? Was it a, you know, landslide? And the board would have to discuss how, how they would want to look at going out for this again. Is it something that we want to push and try to push and push forward? Or do we want to revamp the plans and do something, if the message is something else, then we want to look at that.
Okay, and the second question is really, does the process again begin to secure that 6.4 next year, and that's what the cost is against?
So if the district were to go out with the same referendum and just take another shot at it, the approvals are already in place. If the district were to go out with a different project or add new scope to it, we would have to resubmit to the Department of Ed and get new approvals. We wouldn't want to forego, if we were adding projects or changing projects, we wouldn't want to miss out on the opportunity to receive the funding for those projects.
And the last one is, if again it doesn't go through, the savings will be higher for a year until again it's proposed?
Debt service, the debt service will fall off, yes. It won't be, it will not be replaced.
Among what we saw?
Correct.
I'm still, I'm here trying to figure out the downside to this. So if I go up to talk to somebody, you're going to say, what, $150 a year? If this doesn't go through, you'll get the tax money back? That's all I'm hearing. Am I missing something? Okay.
One of the things that the district has is printed out brochures. It's basically a cheat sheet for this referendum. It's all the information associated with this referendum that you saw on the presentation on an 11 by 17 trifold. They're on the back table. Please pick one up, carry it with you. If somebody asks you a question, you have the answers, you have them right there. But we thank you, we really thank you for taking the time out of your night to come here, this is a great turnout. Yes?
My name is Termeesh, and I'm from River Edge. I have a question. $18 million, where does the money come from? I believe the state is going to give aid every year. So are we going to raise by taxes? How are we going to raise? Are we going to go under the bond?
So right now, the district has a 20-year bond, a 20-year bond that is ending this year. That money that's being paid by the taxpayers right now is going to fall off, it's going to be eliminated. It's going to be replaced by a new debt associated with the new referendum. That's where the 201 and the 100, you know, the difference in cost came from. So that's this slide. So right now, this slide is what the current tax debt service is right now, $201 in Oradell, 174. At the end of this year, this is gone, it goes away. This replaces that, 142 and $123. A savings annually of what you're currently paying to what the new debt will be of $58 a year in Oradell and $50 a year in River Edge.
Only if the state aid is considered.
State aid is already there, it's already been approved.
State aid is there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Good question.
Anyone else?
Nick Charski from River Edge. I'm just wondering about a realistic timeline. You mentioned that you wouldn't put the bids out until October of '24. So then you would probably not start construction until that following summer? So a realistic timeline of everything that you proposed in your presentation, how many? When would that be?
24 to 26. Summer of each, plus whatever projects we can do during the school year.
So two to three years?
Yeah. That's, that's realistic. It doesn't mean we can't try to accelerate, but again, budget pricing and timing is really the critical piece here. Being flexible with the duration is, is the key.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
So this evening, we had what I would call a soft presentation. We invited some people that we consider to be key communicators in the community, people that, that people on the board recognize to be people kind of in the know or involved in different areas or different aspects of municipal life in River Edge or in Oradell. If some of you feel that you, you want to add to that conversation and be one of those key communicators, we're really looking for that in the future. If you're someone who, who wants to go out and answer questions, like Cindy I think is going to do now that she has all this information, we're happy to help you do that. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, but if you are interested, please reach out to me, and I'll include you with that group of key communicators. We have about 40 or so people that we've reached out to previously. Some of you are here already, but some of you may be interested in doing that. If you are, please reach out to me via the website or just call the board office, and I can certainly take your call and get your name. We'd be happy to have you on.
Do you all plan to be at River Edge Day?
I'm sorry?
Do you plan to be at River Edge Day?
Yes, I do. I do. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone.